I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the December 7th, 2015, meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. I'm Kenny Luce, Chairman to the Board, and to my left is Jeff Ramsey, Vice Chair. At this time, I would like the rest of the School Board members to introduce themselves, starting to my right.
Lee Edmond.
Gastonia Township.
Chris Howe, Southland Township.
Mark F. Church, Cherryville Township.
Catherine Roberts, Dallas Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Thank you. And we do have Ms. Cherry on the phone, and she's down there, and she's listening, so I wanted to recognize her also, because she's going to be recognized one way or the other. Okay, before we get started tonight, I would like to take a moment of silence. Today is December 7th, and on December 7th, 1941, hundreds of Japanese fighter planes attacked the American naval base at Pearl Harbor, Honolulu, Hawaii. This only took a couple hours to happen, but over that two hours, they managed to destroy 20 American naval vessels, eight enormous battleships, and more than 300 airplanes. More than 2,000 American soldiers and sailors died in the attack, with another thousand that were injured. And I think we, as a group, we would like to take a moment of silence to recognize everything that these people have done, and everybody in our armed forces does for us each and every day, so I would like to have a moment of silence for just a couple minutes, please. The next order would be the invocation, and I would like to recognize Mr. Booker at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Abba Father, we just thank you as a heavenly Father. We humbly come to you with hearts that are heavy at times and thankful at times. We ask that you guide our steps as we meet tonight, provide direction and wisdom. Help us to see your hand in all your works. Help us to serve with gladness, to be faithful in everything that we do. We offer this prayer with peace and joy in our hearts, but most of all, in your holy, holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to invite special guests for our pledge tonight, if you would be okay with that.
Yes, sir.
We have with us from WA Best, a number of folks, and they're coming forward now. You all may recognize the leader there, Julie Shatterley. She's had her picture taken quite a lot in the last couple of weeks, as she was the lucky winner of the Kia of Gastonia Outstanding Educator Award Program. Now, are you going to be able to speak tonight? Because you were speechless that day.
I'm better.
She was nominated by her colleagues because of the excellent work she does in the library at WA Best. Not only does she love books, but she shares that love with her students each day. And she has brought some of her library assistants with her. Trinity Roddy. Hi, Trinity. Alex Villarreal. Did I get that right? Great. Jessica Vasquez. And Chris Tuttle. Chris, you've got something else special about you, don't you? You might be related to somebody standing up there, would you? Okay. But if you all would lead us in the pledge, we'll stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before y'all leave, I'd like to present you on behalf of our School Board, and it says, "Thank you for supporting your school and this great nation by leading us in the pledge of allegiance." And I want to present you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all would just hold your flag like this. There you go.
And one more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
May I please shake the hand of the library assistants?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Would y'all all please come back up to the front? and this is an action item, and I will need this in a form of a motion. Mr. Ramsey has made the motion, and Mr. Collier has seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Howe.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda for a discussion item concerning Policy Code 2310. One of the duties that this Board is tasked with, other than hiring and firing a good superintendent, is board policy, and we've done well on the superintendent. On this board policy, 2310, 2310 deals with public participation at board meetings. I'm a little confused on it, because when I read it, it says that to have an item placed on the agenda, you've got to do it 10 days prior, then give notice that you want to speak on it. A lot of times, our agenda doesn't come out until five days prior to a board meeting, and therefore, I'm a little confused on when somebody can sign up to speak. I would like to see us go to a public expression policy that allows the public that voted for us, and that we represent, to be able to come in the day of the meeting, sign up before it starts, to discuss a matter they might have. Seems like in the past, we've talked about that it doesn't allow staff to prepare for the item, but considering staff doesn't respond, and we don't respond, I don't know that there's any participation or preparation that needs to take place. And so, I'd like to add an item that we have discussion of policy, 2310, as it relates to public participation, public expression at board meetings.
Okay, I think I'll leave that in the form of a motion.
It was.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Roberts has seconded. Any discussion?
Miss Roberts.
Yes, Mr. Collier.
Where on the agenda?
It'll be added to the bottom, the last item.
And, all right, during discussion, does the, maybe this is directed to the Board Attorney, but does the Chair have the authority to override or make exceptions to the policy as it stands now, as what he'll allow for public expression or not?
Well, the only people that we are aware of who've signed up before.
We're talking about in general. In general.
I'm not aware that we've ever not allowed someone to speak, so I would say the answer is yes.
Mr. Collier, I'd just like to speak to this, to you and Mr. Howe, for a moment. We never, if someone signs up five minutes before the meeting starts, we always allow that, that item to be put on the agenda, or we allow them to speak. I don't think we've ever not allowed someone to speak. It doesn't matter whenever they sign up. We always try to be very accommodating in this matter. So, yes, there has been, there has been some, some judgment called on that, yes. Yes, Mr. Howe?
So, if we're going to say that, then let's put that to writing. I think the ambiguity of saying 10 days, you've got to sign up prior, we've got to know what you're talking about, goes and directs the opposite of what we're saying in here as a board member, or you're saying as a chairman, that you can show up the day of, five minutes before, we'll let you sign up and say it. One of the things that I think this Board needs to do is we need to provide clarity to our policies. So, if our policy says that, and we're going to keep that, then as a Board, the majority say that we're going to keep it. If we're going to say that you can show up five minutes, two minutes before, and sign up to speak at public expression, then let's make a policy that reads that. I think to have a policy that is gray is not good for a publicly elected Board. So, I just want to add clarity to it. If it's going to be 10 days before, somebody tell me it's going to be 10 days before. I'm of the impression that if they come anytime prior to our meeting and sign up and state, you know, their name and stuff when they come up, they ought to be allowed to talk. We're a publicly elected Board by the public people, and they have the freedom to do that, and we ought to allow them to exercise it.
Is this something that we could just refer to the Attorney and let her come up with something, and then bring back to the Board? Or do you still want to add it as an agenda item and have a discussion?
I guess my question would be for you. What do we defer to the Attorney? It's a, it's a public expression policy.
It's a policy change. I mean, do we even want her to come up with some sort of written policy to?
It's just a discussion right now, to say, do we agree that we should sign up 10 days prior, or they should be able to walk in?
That's fine. We'll add it. We'll add it to the agenda. That's no problem. Okay, we've had, we need to vote on it. Any more discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, and we will add that, that will be the 13th item on the agenda tonight. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Collier.
Is that substitute motion in lieu of the original motion made by Mr. Ramsey himself?
Yes, that will be, yes, that will have to be. We adopted that new, we adopted the new agenda with the 13th item on there. Yes, sir.
Just a clarification on the.
Yes, sir. All right, the next item will be the good news, and I will refer to Mr. Booker on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. One of the great things about having a high school that has its first graduating class coming is they get a lot of firsts in that class. Tonight, one of their juniors is here to represent the first conference title in any sport for Stuart W. Kramer. So, if Ellie Portman could come forward. She had a truly outstanding season on the golf course. She led the girls' golf team to win the conference championship. She also went on to take first place in the Western Regional Championships, where the team finished fourth. She then advanced to the state tournament, where her outstanding performance helped her finish second in the state as a junior. So, Ellie, I'm sure Mr. Ramsey is telling you he expects to see you bring home the trophy. We also have with us, I believe, tonight, some of her faithful supporters. Mr. Vine, would you mind coming with? Coach Radford, what's up? And then, don't we also have the coach, Jim Dobrin, here? And as he makes his way forward, recognize he was named Conference Coach of the Year. So, we appreciate all that you all have done. I think it warrants a round of applause for you.
On behalf of the School Board, we'd like to recognize you for your Ellie Portman, Stuart W. Kramer High School Outstanding Achievement. I'm going to say it wrong, I don't like to say it, but state golf champ, and she will be the state champion next year. I have faith in you. December of South Gaston County Schools, signed by our Chairman Kenny Luce and our Superintendent Williams Jeffrey Booker.
Thank you. We're proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer Church, where are you? Come on up.
You're welcome.
Now, you have to go around and shake hands.
in this community, that not only have great athletes, but have great artists. And tonight, we'd like to recognize three of our students who've earned a very special honor. The Bloomingdale Arts Foundation sponsors a program called The Broadway Experience, where aspiring theater students are given the opportunity to tour New York City and learn what it takes to pursue a professional theater career. There were over 60 students from the Charlotte region who were nominated for this program. Only 12 were selected. So, we're in the Charlotte region, you know how many hundreds of thousands of children that is. 12 are selected. Three of those 12 are from Gaston County schools. So, we're very proud of this group. I would like to invite Shakaya Morrison, who is a junior at Hunter Huss, Gracie Devine, and Ambria Campbell, who are juniors at Stuart W. Kramer. If the three of you all could come join us up front. Shakaya was nominated by Julie Ballard. Is Ms. Ballard with us here tonight? No. And Chuck Snow, the Theater Arts Director at Stuart Kramer, nominated both of his students. Chuck's back there or not?
Ballard is teaching. She keeps it down.
We hope this was a great experience for you all, as you represented us, and we look forward to seeing your talents and performance in the future. Mr. Collier.
Board members, audience, and people that are watching on TV, I went to my first Bloomy Awards last year, and show business doesn't have a thing on what they do on these Bloomy Awards over in Charlotte. It is, is black tie. I mean, it is incredible, and the talent that these kids have, and to even get to be on that stage, is incredible. I mean, one of the people that were there is the, the lead role of Miss Saigon in London right now, and was just a high school student like these were just a couple of years ago. So, the talent just to be selected amongst the elite of those folks. Now, let me back up and say something else. These other schools' arts programs have upwards of $50,000 to $100,000 of support from their schools for these programs. We don't have that kind of support for our schools in Gaston County for our arts, I'm sorry to say. They do a very good job with what, with the small budget they have. So, I just want to tell you what an incredible job you guys do with little resources and perform the tal, I could not have been so proud of our kids that were there this year, and I can't wait to see them this year, so. But if you get to go, you should go. Put it on your calendar and go. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, we have a certificate of recognition for an outstanding achievement, achievement for The Broadway Experience. This is signed by our Chairman, Mr. Kenny Luce, and our Superintendent, Mr. Jeffrey Booker. Shakaya Morrison. Shakaya Morrison. I'm sorry. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Gracie Devine. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Amber Campbell.
Ambria.
Ambria. I can't read that. I have trouble with that script. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Yeah. You all can open up your certificates, and then get backwards. You can bend your backs.
Like this. That's fine.
Y'all are going to have to get used to this. And the Tony Award goes to. And one more. Thank you. Now, if y'all shake the board's hands, I'm going to give you congratulations.
That was New York City. Was it Hall's? Was it New York City with double labels? You say double. Great job. Good for mother.
Members of the Board, the next item we want to share with you is a state recognition for a group of students. The TV broadcasting class at Forestview High School was selected in a statewide video contest as second place. It was sponsored by the North Carolina School Board Association. The contest invited students to submit a 30 to 45-second video related to the theme of what's super about public schools. Teacher Melissa Hilig challenged her students to work on it as a class assignment. They combined their ideas and talents and produced the final production that was submitted. On November 17th, they traveled to Greensboro, where they received their trophy and a $2,000 stipend for finishing second place. So, we'd like to invite those students to come forward tonight. Cameron. Seth. Jacob with us tonight? And is Jordan here? Hey, there he is. Now, Ms. Hilig, are you coming forward? We're going to make y'all stand up, so everybody can see you while they watch your video on the screens.
of them with my high schooler, and we actually picked Forestview for the win, even against the submission of the school that my daughter attends. How about that? So, I just thought you guys did a phenomenal job, and I really liked the, I guess you could say the selfie stick that went across at the game. I don't know what you guys used, but I thought that was really cool. Oh, you put on the flag? Even cooler, so. Here are certificates signed by our Board Chair, Mr. Kenny Luce, and our Superintendent, Mr. Booker, for your outstanding achievement, second place in the video contest. Cameron. And if you'll fold that back, because you'll want that for your picture. And Jordan. And I will actually present you with my plaque. So, congratulations. I am looking forward to where you go and the things you'll do in the future, and you'll probably able to do some stories on our theater kids as well. That would be awesome, wouldn't it? So, congratulations. Can I get to talk to your own picture?
Got your mom's album.
And if you'll go around, check into your board. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. We appreciate all that good news. There was one other thing that I would just like to mention. Couple weeks ago, on November 19th, we took our lives in our own hands, and we drove, we let, well, we took a long trip to, to the lower part of South Carolina, and Todd Hagens was the driver. But he kept saying, "We'll be there in just in a few minutes," and we kept driving. It started raining harder and harder, and he kept driving and driving, but anyway. We finally made it to Williamsburg County and Clariton Schools. That was the two counties, or that was the counties that we adopted with the Nichols for Neighbors. And I think it speaks volume for this, this community and for this school district, and I want everyone to hear that this Board thanks everyone in the community, and every child in every school for doing that. I know as time goes by, we forget things a lot of time, but as we drove down, and the closer we got to the, to these two districts, you would be driving, and the GPS would say, you know, you're supposed to go there, and we would drive that way, and you look over to the right, and there would be a road there, but it would be missing part of it. It was still gone. So, those fans, those families have a long recovery to get back to where they were. We heard many stories about losing children to other districts because they couldn't get to school, or they didn't have anywhere to live, or something like that. But I really wanted, or the School Board really wanted to thank everyone. They were very appreciative. They were going to be able to help a lot of kids, children, before the Thanksgiving break, and it was a very nice thing for us to do as a school system, and as a, from the School Board, the School Board would like to thank you, each and every one of you. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is, will be the public expression, and I have a couple people that have signed up to speak tonight, but I would like to outline the rules before we proceed. Citizens wishing to make a comment and who have completed a request to speak form will be recognized by the Chair and then requested to step up to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes when there are two or more speakers on an issue. The members of the Board do not comment on public expression. Public expression does not allow for comments on any confidential or personnel matters. Public expression does not allow for comments on any confidential or personnel matters. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the public expression and we have two people that have signed up to speak this evening and the first one will be Ronald Muse.
Here.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Yes, my name is Ronald Muse. I live at 2524 Boundary Street in Belmont, North Carolina. My expression is, I would like to discuss the issue that I've seen on the news, not really the news, in the papers, about the mascots being changed at two different high schools or the allegations, I said that way. And being a resident of Gaston County for 45 years, in the Belmont area for 45 years, my grandfather, J.C. Sanders, was born in 1912 from Hartwell, Georgia. He has Cherokee influx in him and also I have pictures of him as well so you can actually see his presence and stuff like that. He's also, whenever he was around Belmont area and he still has, my mother still has her house that she grew up in on Brown Drive, which is in the South Point District. His nickname in the schools at that time was Big Chief. He's six foot seven, six foot eight. He's since departed in 87 and I'm an 88 grad of East Gaston High School. I lived on the South Point-East Gaston line. I'm also a board of director member at Community Volunteer Fire Department. Let's see, just some more things about myself is just the, my parents were North Belmont PTA from 1966 until 1982. Also, they was also band booster members of East Gaston from 1976 until about 1984. Myself, as far as here at the Board of Education, I have 12 or 13 years perfect credentials, missed about four hours. And so my credentials as far as me speaking about this, pretty good. I've lived my whole life in this area and I've known what's going on in this area my entire life and I really don't want it to change. I really would like the Board of Educators to really understand that there's a whole lot of history that has went along with all this and I was proud to go to East Gaston to be a quote warrior, so to speak. It speaks a volume of who I am, what I've become. Also, I have nephews that have attended and are now attending South Point High School. Their last name is Muse. Everybody can kind of figure this one out. And also at the same timeframe, it's just, I have a double impact on this situation. So I really don't want it to change and I don't want the artist freedom of expression that is all throughout East Gaston High School that you see on the walls with their artistic development of what the mascot is within the school system itself, within the hallways and all the stairwells and everything else to the school. It's just, it's really amazing just all the stuff that has went on at East Gaston and I just really, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person to speak will be Carmen Starnes.
Thank y'all for letting me be here tonight. I'm with Ron on this. I'm Carmen Starnes. I've been a resident of Mount Holly for my whole life, 43 years, went to East Gaston, was a graduate in 1990. Many family members on both sides of my family, my husband's family are all graduates or currently attending to East Gaston or South Point and all of us are very proud of that. Other than being proud of that, there's recently, you know, most of us has probably heard there's someone that would like to change our mascots, who is not a resident of this county. He claims to be in a tribe in Mecklenburg County and it just bothers me knowing that someone wants to change something in our county. He hasn't been to our games, he hasn't been to any of the schools, he doesn't know how we feel about, we do nothing to, and I have never seen in the time that I've been at East Gaston, or my son was at East Gaston, anything derogatory toward any of the students. Our opposer has claimed that some of the students, I guess who are Native American, feel unsafe attending the schools there, which I've, I know people who've worked in the school system, in administration and teachers and even my family, like I mentioned before, that had already been there, if they had ever heard of this happening and of all the ones I've asked, everyone said no. And that has never been an issue of a student ever feeling unsafe because they're Native American, attending either one of these schools. I feel like if that was an issue, it would have been known about by now. East Gaston and South Point both were born in early 70s. This has never been an issue. This is totally and completely political. This guy is, he just wants some political gain in this and he's using Gaston County and our school to do this. We're not a rich county. If this did follow through, if this did happen, I can imagine the cost that it would take to change everything. If you think about it from the little things as far as like letterhead, uniforms, wrestling mats, signs, everything would have to be changed. Gaston County struggles enough as it is to pay teacher assistance and teachers what they so rightly deserve and I can't imagine having to have this expense on top of having to pay salaries and it just, I hope you guys consider, I hope this doesn't go any further than this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to recognize Dr. Cook for a classroom moment.
Well, good evening Chairman Lutes, Board members and Superintendent Booker. You may be wondering what this blue carpet is in front of you. We're going to take you on a carpet ride tonight. I am thrilled this evening to have the opportunity to introduce our elementary classroom moment. As you are aware, each of our elementary Title I schools is fortunate to have a literacy teacher supporting our students. Literacy teachers work to improve student literacy through small group reading instruction. Students benefit from direct instruction at their specific reading level. Tonight, we are fortunate to have one of our literacy teachers and some of her students with us. Our literacy teacher, Ms. Robin Medlock, Ms. Medlock has taught in the K-2 arena for more than 20 years. I know she doesn't look it. During her tenure with Gaston County Schools, she has been a classroom teacher at both Carr and Lowell Elementary. She has recently transitioned to her role as a literacy teacher for Springfield Elementary and is their 2014-15 Teacher of the Year. Ms. Medlock holds a Masters in Reading and a National Board Certification in Early Childhood. In 2009, she renewed her National Board Certification and in the spring of 2015, added an ESL Certification to her current teaching license. Continuous Learning is her middle name. During Ms. Medlock's professional career, she has written and been awarded more than $15,000 in grant funding for innovative teaching ideas. She has served as a National Board Score, a TIPS trainer and a member of the SACS Accreditation Visitation Team. Ms. Medlock and her husband have two daughters. Their youngest daughter's an eighth grader at Holbrook Middle School. She's a Lady Lions soccer captain and sings in the chorus and their oldest daughter recently graduated from North Gaston High School and is now, is proud to say, "Go Heels" as a Carolina cheerleader. Tough Saturday night. Ms. Medlock has brought with her some very special friends. Maggie Ballard, her parents are Jeff and Alice Ballard. Maggie is seven years old. She enjoys playing learning games on her dad's iPad and a tablet of her very own is at the top of her wish list. Kayden Shepker, his parents are Dave and Jamie Shepker. Kayden is a first grader. He enjoys reading. For Christmas, he is asking Santa for a computer. Atlanta Taylor, her parents are Erin and Jennifer Taylor. Atlanta's a first grader. She likes to work puzzles and play with her friends. Her Christmas list includes lots of good books. She loves to read for fun. Brayden Clemmer, his parents are Chad and Nicole Clemmer. Brayden is six years old. He likes to play outside with his friends. For Christmas, he is hoping to find a Transformer Ninja Turtle under the tree. Parents of these very special young folks, would you please stand and be recognized? We thank you for your support that you provide to your students, but also to the school. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Emily Pog, principal at Springfield Elementary School and her team for their support of all their students. In addition, I'd like to recognize and thank Ms. Risa Holt, Director of Federal and Special Programs with Gaston County Schools, Ms. Erin Selby and Ms. Melissa Buchanan, Title I coordinators for GCS, for all their hard work and support of our schools and students. While Ms. Medlock and her students are getting set up, I want to preview with you what you're about to see. The context of this classroom moment features a portion of a first grade guided reading lesson. The snapshot begins with a word study designed to increase the children's understanding of word patterns. The lesson then connects new learning with meaningful text by providing an opportunity for students to partner read a familiar story. As the children read, the teacher serves in the role of coach. She observes, listens and facilitates reading growth. The lesson closes as the students strengthen their comprehension skills by responding to the story. Let's turn our attention to Ms. Medlock and her students as we listen and learn.
Good evening, school board members, Chairman Lutes and Superintendent Booker. My children have been excited all day about our nighttime field trip and when we walked in, their eyes were wide with the formal room. But although our venue is formal, your faces are very friendly. Just the idea and the design of a classroom moment, it speaks to a relationship, a relationship that you are investing in with educators, our students and our parents as well. Thank you so much for inviting our Springfield readers to join in tonight's showcase. Our moment is going to spotlight guided reading in the classroom. You're going to see data tonight, not used as a tool to evaluate, but as a tool to teach. As teachers, we're always looking for the best book to instruct the child. We're not looking for a book where the child reads at a 98% accuracy. That level is the child's independent level. That's the good fit book that a child would curl up in a reading nook and read for enjoyment. With that same understanding, we're not looking for the book that the child reads with an 86% accuracy level. That's a frustrational text. The book is just a bit too difficult. Too many errors will lose the meaning and the flow of the story for the student. Reading becomes an exact science when a teacher finds the instructional reading level of the child between 90 and 94% accuracy rate. It's here that the miscues, the mistakes, the errors become the most powerful. As readers, we learn through our mistakes. It's here a teacher is able to facilitate and coach the child through conferencing, applying strategies and practice. It is here we find and facilitate reading growth. I want you all to step back to a time when you were learning to read and though our ages are different, our experiences are going to be very similar. Most of us sat in a first grade classroom at a desk, most likely in rolls, rows. Every student in the class followed along from the very same book. It didn't matter if you'd already figured out how to read the newspaper or if maybe you weren't even quite sure that letters made words yet. You'd fidget nervously in your desk, you'd wait for your turn to read a sentence or maybe even the whole paragraph. Then when your turn was over for the day, you could relax. It was bound not to get back around to you, the story would be over and you could turn your attention and time thinking about recess or maybe what you're going to have for lunch. This practice is called round robin reading. It's an ineffective and poor strategy. We know that now. Current research has told us that. We know not only is it a poor practice, it's even detrimental to the reluctant reader. It sabotages comprehension, it's destructive to fluency and we've adjusted our teaching with that information to current research. Now our students read staggered, though all at the same time, and all of our students are engaged in a small group lesson right on their level and they are reading. Children grow in proficiency and fluency when they have an opportunity to engage in repeated familiar readings at their just right instructional level. This familiar read is going to set our stage tonight. Tonight, you'll see a snapshot into elementary classrooms across Gaston County Schools. It wasn't very many years ago, even though we knew the research was good, we didn't have the books. We couldn't do this. Doesn't matter what the research says if we don't have the materials to implement. And I want to thank you, school board members, as well as Gaston County Schools, for the funding of many of these leveled books. Teachers from each building were invited to shop for books to supplement their guided reading programs and we thank you. These books provide the opportunity of tailored, data-driven, engaging reading materials for our students. Tonight, you're going to see good research-based practices put into practice. Our lesson is going to begin with a study of digraphs and then it's going to transition and you're going to see those digraphs into practice when the boys and girls read a familiar story. During this time, our children are going to build fluency, proficiency with text. They're going to gain a deeper understanding of the story and you're going to notice how I coach into these children as they're reading and use their miscues, their mistakes to facilitate their learning. Boys and girls, can you please join me in the classroom? Good evening, readers.
Good evening, Ms. Medlock.
Can you give this bump a friend and say, "Marvelous Monday"? Marvelous Monday. We are learning in first grade about digraphs. We have already learned as readers that when C and H sit together in a word, what sound do they make? When TH sit together in a word, what sound do they make? I'm going to tell you tonight a secret story about S and H. When S is all by itself, what sound does S make? When H is all by itself, what sound does H make? Well, let me tell you a secret story. S and H, when they stand together in a word, they love to read, but all the other letters are noisy, so when they're trying to read, they have to say, "Shh." What digraph does SH make? We're going to play a game and Ms. Small was going to help us with this game. Stand up, readers. You're going to listen to the words that have digraphs in them. The digraph might be at the beginning, it might be at the middle, it might be at the end and then I want you to find the digraph chart and stand by it if you can hear it. This learning digraphs is what good readers do. When they come to words they don't know, so this is good practice. Let's see how you do.
Ready, readers? Chair. Both. Slushy. Butcher. Hard one, butcher. Share. Both.
Good job, readers. Can you find your spot back on the carpet and put your school legs on, please? I'm going to hand you a familiar book. We're revisiting a story that we've read earlier. When I hand you your book, please lay it flat on the ground. Let's read that title together. What is that title?
Baby Bird.
Baby Bird. This is a story about a bird who grows and changes. When you first came to Springfield Elementary as a kindergarten, you do not look now like you did then. You're growing and changing. Can you turn peanut butter and jelly style and tell a friend how you're growing and changing? Maybe you... When you're reading, I want you to do what good readers do when they come to words that are strange or new. And there may be some strange or new words in here. So, turn around, and in your playground voice, I want you to sing that "Helping Hand." Can you turn around? It's right here. I'm going to whisper it to help you, but I want you to sing the voices. As you read your book, use the strategies that good readers use when they're reading. Are you ready?
Look at the picture. Let the sounds of you, fine chunks skipper read. That's what you should do. And think about the story.
Now, invite a friend to read, and I'm going to be listening in to what good readers do.
Once there was a baby bird. The baby bird had a small beak. She was small. She had small hair. She was very small. But she was small and small. Then she had a small beak. The baby bird, she began to grow.
More words with your eyes.
The baby bird began to grow. "Oh, my," said the baby bird. "My big and go." "My little bird, she gets so small. My legs were small and long. My hands are big and big. Because I'm trying to remember."
It was something-
"The baby bird grew and grew. Oh, my," said the baby bird. "Look at me. I am very big and big. Something happened. The baby bird much more. I grew. Oh, my," said the baby bird.
I know that we're not finished with the story, but we already know the ending, don't we? So, you're going to take a story one, and you're going to go back and visit our grownups. Grownups, your job is to read the story one, and our friends are going to respond to the question. It's a snapshot. The lesson's a little bit longer than this. These friends, their behavior and their engagement, enjoyment of reading is like this every day. It is a blessing. It is a joy to come and do this job and teach boys and girls to read in Gaston County. We are going to pull out a cheerio to celebrate our friends doing what good readers do when they come to words that are strange and new. So, would you take this, Mr. Kayden, over to Ms. Smallwood and let her pull our cheer out for us? What cheer do we get? What is this cheer? The hamburger cheer. Grownups, you're having, you're going to have to help us with this, too. So, everybody, make your hamburger patty. Put it on the grill. Is it done? Not yet. Put it on that grill. Is it done? Not yet. One more time. Is it done? Well done, readers. Well done. Thank you. That was just awesome. Oh. Just holler at the manufacturer. Trade books.
Mr. Cooks, someone forgot to come around and shake hands.
She's trying to slide off.
Thank you for the opportunity. I really do appreciate being able to come and shake hands with these readers. Awesome classroom teacher. Thank you. Yes. I see her crying. She's a J.B.'s. She does travel. Next year, yes, sir.
Didn't these students do a wonderful job? Let's give them another round of applause. And Chairman Lutes and board members, I think that we could all safely agree that if we all had teachers like Ms. Medlock, we'd all be better readers today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cooks.
The next item on the agenda are our committee reports, and the first committee will be curriculum and instruction. And I believe Ms. Roberts will be the one that will be giving this report.
The CNI Committee met today at 4:00. Members in attendance were our Chair, Doc Guthrie, myself, Jeff Ramsey, and Dr. Cook. Other in attendance were Risa Hoyle and Brett Buchanan. We discussed the CTE Oversight Committee. Dr. Cook and Mr. Buchanan shared with the committee members an overview of the work that was completed by the CTE Oversight Committee. The committee will make short-term and long-term recommendations to the full board regarding the next steps for programming. The CTE Oversight Committee will be making final recommendations to the Board of Education in January. The Board of Education and CNI Committee would like to thank board members Chris Howell and Jeff Ramsey, along with the other CTE Oversight Committee members for their service and leadership in this important area. We also reviewed the North Carolina Works Career Coaches. Dr. Cook and Mr. Buchanan presented to committee an opportunity for Gaston College and Gaston County Schools to apply for grant funds being provided by the State Board of Community Colleges in order to fund community college career coaches in select high schools. Dr. Cook and Mr. Buchanan will present this information to the full board tonight. Approval from the full Board of Education will be sought in order to be able to write an application seeking these funds. The committee supports this pursuit of these North Carolina Works Career Grant Funds. Ms. Risa Hoyle, Director of Federal and Special Programs, shared with the committee members an update regarding core commitments for curriculum for a STEAM magnet school. Ms. Hoyle and other school system stakeholders have been researching curriculum components for our STEAM framework through visits to other school systems and through the review of curriculum materials and programs. A review of this information and recommendation curriculum will be shared for the full Board of Education in future meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Roberts, or anyone on the committee? All right. Seeing no questions, they'll move on to the Operations Committee report, and I will recognize Mr. Collier.
Mr. Chair, if you will bear with me tonight, we have somewhat of a lengthy report and presentations. So, first, I'd like to say that we had a meeting November 30th, and then, we called an additional meeting today at 4:30. Our committee includes myself, Mr. Dedman, Mr. Howell, and Mr. Upchurch. In attendance to both meetings were the following staff members: Mark Holler, Gary Hoskins, Chip Erby, Danny Garrett, Bessie Harvey, Marcella Calvert, and Nick Apares. At our last two meetings, we discussed the following items. The North Carolina Public Schools' Five-Year Facilities Need Assessment, which has been compiled and now completed by Chip Erby and Bessie Harvey. The state mandates this report, and it looks at every school facility in our county and each school site. This report was approved by our committee and will be sent to the state on time. Our committee has requested that capital improvement planning be a topic at our upcoming retreat in January. We received updates from the architects on our two new school projects. The architects are here now, and I'm going to ask Boomerang to come up first and give you the presentation and updates of the elementary school.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everyone. Bear with me for just a moment. Let me see if I can get PowerPoint up. Looks familiar. You know, I loved seeing the classroom moment just a few minutes ago because I'm going to show some pretty pictures, I'm going to show some plans and drawings, but that really drives it home because that's really what our work is about, those classroom moments, and making sure that our designs help to facilitate that as much as possible. So, I loved seeing that. We've had really good input throughout our process. Wonderful input from the district, also from the city. You may recall, this project is being located-
George.
Okay. This project is being located on the Pleasant Ridge campus, but it's actually bringing three schools together. First and foremost, a safe and nurturing environment is something that we have in the back of our minds throughout the process of our design. And really, from a personal standpoint, I really believe this can be a very positive influence on the neighborhood and the community. And so, I think that what we're working with, we're looking forward to making sure that it's a positive statement. You may recall that it is a school designed for 800 students for pre-K through 5th grade. The site will allow for good separation and safe movement about the site, onsite parking for 240 cars, and backup for 70 cars. That's something that the presence campus does not have and have. This is the site plan, and actually, the concept for the plan came early in our process. But through our work, we have refined this plan and have a site plan now that is very workable and deals with the topography issues that we have on the site. It also helps to facilitate safe movement about the site. The plan presently in the lower right-hand corner are the existing buildings on the campus. Those will be demolished after the new construction is completed. The new construction is shown there in orange, and we are maintaining the multipurpose room and the eight-classroom addition, which was constructed in 2008. Those will be facilitated into the new design of the new school. Everything will be enclosed and accessible. One of the things with regards to an elementary school is the movement into the building and the drop-off areas. The plan is designed such that the cafeteria is the holding space for the morning program when kids arrive for the breakfast program. It works really well. The plan allows for automobile drop-off to occur, and this scheme is showing on the north side of the cafeteria. The bus students will drop off and enter into the, from the southern side, and so, they will both be able to come into the cafeteria for that morning breakfast program, and then they'll make their way about the rest of the school. So, it lays out very well. It's also a plan that's designed so that it is zoned and can be closed off with different areas for after-hours use and those kinds of functions. The administrative area is shown in this greenish color there to the upper right-hand corner. It is a two-story design, and the media center is sort of at the helm of the school. It's shown there at a very central location with good accessibility from all the classroom areas. It is, although it is a two-story scheme, it is, we do have on-grade access from both levels because of the slope on the site. So, it really functions quite well from that standpoint. Our construction documents are essentially complete. They're going to all the review agencies next week for their final reviews. Our plan is pending their reviews, put the project out for bids in February, receiving bids in March, and awarding, and with a goal of moving in summer of 2017. As I said, I'm going to show a few little colorful pictures. This is a view of the front of the school. You may see that it's going to incorporate a lot of natural light, color, and really be something that we believe can be a positive statement for the community and the neighborhood. This is a view, not only are we dealing with the front of the school, but because this school really has visuals from all the, all different angles, given that it's on two intersecting streets. The courtyard will be developed also as a very usable space, one that will be used for outdoor instruction with access from the classrooms. I also wanted to mention that, just as we did for Kramer, we have developed a project website. We believe it's important to keep folks informed as the process moves forward. We heard some really positive feedback with regards to that website that we kept up to date with Kramer. And so, we will be activating this tomorrow, actually, which will have the content that I had, that I showed tonight. And then, as the job progresses and construction gets underway, we will be posting construction pictures and that kind of information as well. That can be accessed through your website. It can also be accessed through the website thinkboomerang.com/gaston. So, it's been a great project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Mr. Chair, if any board members have any questions while Mr. Brown's here.
Sure. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Brown?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
The next- The next firm is LS3P, and Mr. Bellamy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. My name is David Bellamy. I'm with LS3P Associates, and we've had the good pleasure of working with y'all. First of all, Board members and Superintendent Booker, thank you for having us. I had the good fortune of working on Stanley Middle School design, and I'm going to let Marcus Moore, who's our project architect, get through some of the details of the project.
Good evening, everybody. We have an exciting new school that we would like to show you tonight and share with you the progress that we've been making over the past few months with the Gaston County School Board, the Gaston County Planning Committee, and various review agencies. We believe the new school will become an asset to the community, to Stanley, North Carolina, and become a state-of-the-art facility. The new school does a positive for the district and the community, and is designed for innovative and safe learning as well as community use in mind. We have a two-story design that will accommodate 800 students with a core capacity to be expanded to 1,000 students. We have the compact plan that illustrates the middle school concepts with 6th, 7th, and 8th grades in grade separation. The site will allow for separate bus and vehicle entrances, specifically parent drop-off and bus and service entries. The design features a good security and community use. The new school will be located at the existing Stanley Middle School site. Where you see the football field and baseball field is where the current middle school sits. Hovis Road and Ralph Hansel Boulevard are the two intersecting streets. The new school will be built on the rear of the site where the existing football field is located, here. The separate access we spoke of earlier will be accomplished by the main entry here, which will be utilized by public and parent drop-off along the long drive to accommodate the required stacking. The bus entry is located on the rear of the site, separate from the parent drop-off. This allows for the students to be dropped off in the bus parking located here and have direct access to the cafeteria. The compact site plan features controlled access points, great sightlines for security purposes, a separate gym that can be utilized during after-hours and community events. This gym can be sectioned off here with lockable doors that prevents access during after-hours. The administration is located here in the front main entry of the building. The media center becomes the heart of the school. Dr. Balknight has assisted us with designing this. The cafeteria is located adjacent to the media center and also becomes the heart of the school. The two-story design in mind, we wanted to have two separate administration areas so that you could have eyes at different levels and administration at different levels. The guidance department is located here. The grades are separated by wings. The 7th grade is located separate from the 8th graders, and if we go back to the first floor plan, the 6th graders are located on the first floor. This allows the 6th graders to be safe, close, accessible to on-grade, and the larger, more disruptive students separated from them. We have been talking with Duke Energy. The major issue that we have with the site is relocating those power lines. As you may be aware, there are these large power lines that run directly through the middle of the site. It's imperative that we get those lines relocated and discussions accomplished as soon as possible. We've also submitted drawings to review agencies for review, and we're waiting to receive comments back from them. Right now, we have entered into the construction document phase, which is where we will develop more details than drawings. We anticipate the bids to go out March 2015. We're going to stagger them after the elementary school so that we can have the most competitive bids available. The bids will be awarded April 2015 with a notice to proceed. Construction should have began in the summer of 2015, 2016. We have an anticipated move-in goal of summer 2017 with the athletic fields being completed in 2018. The site allows the opportunity to phase it. Phase 1, we're going to build the new school. Phase 2, we're going to demolish the existing and then build the athletic schools. The exterior of the school becomes a stately presence, something the community can be excited about and recognizes it as a school. We want it to go with red face brick, but with opportunities to allow natural light with this compact plan. Similar to Boomerang, we'll provide an FTP site where community members can have direct access to the content we share with you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Again, Mr. Chair, if any Board members have any questions for the architects while they're here.
Yes, Ms. Roberts.
Staff was wondering, since the band room is on the second floor, is the elevator going to be large enough to move the large instruments when they have to go perform at other schools or have band concerts downstairs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Collier?
We have a question from Ms. Guthrie. Ms. Chair.
The other doc. Uh, Mr. Collier, you might be able to answer this. Are both schools still on schedule for groundbreaking in January or February?
Doc, no, they are not ready for groundbreaking. It's going to be later in the spring. They're just now getting construction documents finalized, and we'll be putting bids out sometime after the first of the year, so groundbreaking's going to be sometime in the early, middle spring is the best estimate at this time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are we still, hopefully, our target dates still open in fall of 17 then?
Yes, ma'am. They just presented that information in the slideshow, Doc, that you weren't able to see, but we are well within that target.
Okay, good. I'm sorry, and I could barely hear either one of them, so I apologize for that.
Not a problem. Anyone else?
No more questions?
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Mr. Chair, to continue on with my report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Collier.
We discussed the County Commission Township Grant for the track and fencing improvements at Hunter Huss, and Mr. Howell has an assurance from Mr. Jason Williams that he will sponsor that township grant. In addition, we've discussed to request other township grants for our other townships. So at this point, in this report, there's a green paper that everyone should have, and each township has put together an additional request for township grant, and we're just going to go in the order of each township, and I'm going to let each person who represents that township kind of explain that request. And we'll start with Cherrville, with Mr. Upchurch.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collier. In looking at the Cherrville Township, the project that comes directly to the top and is most important and is top priority in the Cherrville Township is a replacement of the playing floor at Nixon Gym. The floor was resanded many years ago and put on, and at the time, many coats of polyurethane or whatever, extra coats were put on there. But now the floor has, is past due and needs definitely replacing. The floor, the Nixon Gym not only serves the high school but the Beam Intermediate School and also the many activities that go on during the summertime, whether it's the community or the city programs, and also the basketball tournament right at Christmas time. This is a very important part of the community and serves the whole community. The cost of the floor is $160,000. There is a matching funds of $12,000, which brings the total request to $148,000.
Okay. The next township grant is for Gaston, and Ms. Roberts is going to speak on that one.
We're looking at three different, well, yes, three different projects in the Dallas area. We look for projects that not only involve school use but community use as well. We are submitting lighting and curtains for the North Gaston Auditorium. When I was there last year, I was able to see just how poor the lighting is in there. When we were having a program, I think it was our academic awards, you could barely see the paper in front of you to read off the students' names. At one time, we did have a church using that facility, and so we were able to use their lighting, which was wonderful, but they have since purchased the building and have moved out. We are also missing curtains in that auditorium. The hardware that's there that's existing is still in good condition. Cost for these upgrades for lighting and curtains is around $43,000. North Gaston also needs to replace light poles for the baseball field. And again, this is something that the community would use as well. Replacing now would cost about $60,000. Another upgrade would be at Friday for their football and soccer field. They need additional bleachers. As of right now, when parents come to watch their kids play, the home team knows that they need to bring some chairs, but our away teams are unaware, and so that leaves a lot of spectators standing through the entire soccer game or football game. This would cost around $12,000 for the concrete pad and one new bleacher set, which would bring the total cost of the Dallas Township request $115,000. I'm sorry, $115,400. Yeah. $115,400.
$115,400.
$115,400.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. The next one on your list is Hunter Huss, which the Board approved in our previous meeting, and then the next one falls under River Bend, which is mine. Like Ms. Roberts, the East Gaston Auditorium is just terrible. I was there to give a speech, and you literally couldn't see your paper to read it. So they put together requests to replace the lighting, the audio and sound, and curtains in that auditorium. The audio and sound comes to $36,000, the lighting $23,400, and the curtains $20,000, for a total of $79,400. In addition to the high school, we've looked at the elementary schools, and again, keeping in mind, all these requests come as dual-purpose for community use. This is what the commissioners have told us they're trying to find how they want to use these township grants where there's dual use from the community. So with that in mind, the playgrounds at Catawba Heights Elementary, Kaiser Elementary, Pinewood Elementary, and Rankin Elementary need upgrades, and we got quotes all over the board from $8,000 to $30,000 apiece, so we took a median number of about $15,500. So those four come to a total of $62,000 for those playgrounds for those four elementary schools. Third part of my request includes the middle school at Mount Holly. A great auditorium, it's just old, but they just simply would be thrilled with new curtains, and so that comes in at $20,000. And again, these things would enhance community use. The auditoriums, both at East Gaston and Mount Holly, would enhance and increase the usage of those facilities by the community. That grand total of those three projects for the elementary schools, the middle school, and East Gaston's auditorium come to $161,400. The last township grant application request comes from the South Point Township, and Mr. Howell will present that one.
Thank you, Mr. Collier, Mr. Chair, and fellow Board members. I'd like to remind you how we got to this township grant. If you remember, the hospital lease proceeds came in a rather large sum to the county. The county requested through a task force, those that wanted to apply for the grants. This Board applied, was awarded the 1.1 million for the Chromebooks, just a small portion of that amount of the money that the county received. And then afterwards, the county came back and awarded each township commissioner their own $500,000 check that they could use towards their township, and one of the things that they said was that it had to be dual-purpose use, as Mr. Collier stated, and several other people. So in the South Point Township, one of the projects that we're going to ask to be funded is, just like two of the other ones, the auditorium. Took a tour of the auditorium where the sound system, the lighting, was dilapidated, inadequate at best. They do a lot of functions in there. It's a 1,000-seat auditorium that is used for, Ms. South Point, it's used for the homecoming pageant, inductions, award ceremonies, and many other uses by the community. Some of the things they miss out on are, as we saw before in the performing arts, when you have a drama that has inadequate lighting or sound, they must go out and rent that at additional cost, of which we have very limited funds to help them with. The other part is the chorus concerts. Chamber Choir and Women's Choir and the combined mixed choir can't use that facility due to the sound and lighting in there as well, so they have to go off-campus. Currently, South Point utilizes Catawba Heights Baptist, who's been very gracious in letting them use that, but it's not in the South Point Belmont community. In talking to both the chorus teacher and the drama teacher, with the addition the chorus would stay and do their performances there at the school, if we could upgrade this, and talking to the drama, the drama would actually move their class, when possible, to the auditorium, and it also facilitates them in providing a tech team class, if you will, so they can get their tech education up in running soundboards, lighting, that sort of thing. The second thing we're requesting, I'm requesting in the South Point Township grant, is some repairs to the main driveway and parking lots. If you go to the South Point campus, you will not notice a Smart Car in their parking lot. They had one, it fell in a hole, and nobody brings it. No, I'm just kidding with that. But that parking lot is utilized by many people, whether it be AAU baseball teams, the South Point Red Raider Football Team, which is going to the state championship on Friday, need I remind you, and so it's used by a lot of people in the community, and it has some very significant repairs that could stand to be done to that facility. So based in light of what the county commissioner said, that it had to be, or they wanted it to be dual-purposed, based on community use and school use, and the criteria which they laid out, you see at the front of each one of these requests, the South Point Township request is going to be $99,400, and I am challenging the South Point Township County Commissioner to take the $500,000 that his Board granted him and to come on board with facilitating some education improvements as well as community improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Mr. Chair, and our committee would like to bring forward tonight as a motion and a second that we move forward with the application of these four additional grants. We approved Hunter Huss in our last meeting, so I'll read out each individual township grant. Cherrville Township Grant Application for $148,000. North Gaston Township Grant Application for $115,400. River Bend Township Grant Application for $161,400. And the South Point Township Grant Application for $99,400. And again, our committee brings that forward as a motion with a first and a second.
Collier, is there any discussion within the Board members? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Okay. Okay.
Do you have a question?
All in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Collier.
Mr. Chair. That completes my report. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 29th at 4:30 here in our board room. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collier. We appreciate all the hard work from your committee. Okay, the next item on the agenda will be the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and I would like to recognize Mr. Hoskins.
Good evening, Chairman Lutz, Vice Chairman Ramsey, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. Each of you should have two documents in front of you. The first one is the compliance report from Anderson, Smith, and Wyke, which we are presenting to you for information purposes. The second report, the nice colorful one here, is our 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which we lovingly call the CAFR. We will be asking for action to approve this, and this will be presented by Mr. Vince Quinn. Mr. Quinn is a familiar face. He is a CPA with Anderson, Smith, and Wyke, who does about a third of the audits of other school districts in the state of North Carolina. He has worked on our audit probably close to 20 years. He's a graduate of Hunter Huss, his kids graduated from public school here, so he has deep roots in this community and is very involved, invested. And with that, I will turn that over, turn this over to Mr. Quinn.
The report I'll be speaking about today is the one that Gary pointed out, has all the colors versus mine, it is kind of bland. So this is a report that is produced by the Finance Department, obviously, that Gary is in charge of, and they do a great job every year. One of the things I'd like to point out first is, this is behind the introductory section of that report, is Roman numeral pages 14 and 15. These are the certificates that were received and awarded to the school system based on last year's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that they, that passed and was received by you. There is two organizations. There's one, it's the Government Finance Officers Association, and the other one is the Association of School Business Officials. A lot of districts get one or the other. There are very few districts that apply and get both of them, so I just wanted to point that out. The next thing I would like to mention is on page one, after the financial section, is our audit opinion. And there are a lot of paragraphs there, but essentially what that opinion says is that we believe the financial information contained in that financial section is materially accurate and has been audited by us in accordance with general accounting standards in the United States of America. Then if we could turn to page 18. Page 18 is the balance sheet for the school district. And I always like to just point out the unassigned fund balance that you have there in the first column. That's the bottom line there, under fund balances, $6,299,000 as of the end of June 30th, 2015. That represents about 2.54% of the total expenditures that you have for the school system. That number, last year, the unassigned fund balance was approximately 8.4 million, and which amounted to 3.6%. So that number has come down in, as of the end of 2015, by about $2 million. The next item I would like to point out is on page 25. Page 25 is the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance for the Proprietary Fund. Your proprietary fund is your child nutrition program. Just wanted to point out there, about the fifth lineup from the bottom, change in net position. There was a decrease in that fund for 2015 of approximately $736,000. Last year, there was about a decrease of about $46,000. So that was, as always, I would like to thank Mr. Hoskins and his staff for being prepared for the audit. It makes my job a little bit easier. Obviously, there's a lot of information we have to look at over the time period, but them being so prepared always, always helps out there. And I'd also like to thank the board for being able to provide this service, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Collier.
Well, Mr. Quinn, this isn't for you, it's probably more for Mr. Hoskins. That's a significant drop in fund balance from the previous year, from eight-point-something million down to two, six million. Can you tell me why there was such a significant drop in the fund balance?
Sure. We have been budgeting a decrease of about $1.2 million. We put that in our budget every year, and this year, it's actually $2.2 million because we added the other million for the, the increase in the local supplement for teachers. So 1.2 million of that was certainly planned. The other, I guess it's 800,000, we used for various projects towards the end of the year, mainly technology. So we're trying to work that fund balance down because that seems to be one of the things that we get a lot of pushback on when we try to go to the county and ask for money. They keep saying, well, what about your fund balance? So we're trying to bring that down a little bit. As Mr. Quinn mentioned, we're down around 2.5% of our expenses. When you look at the peer group, that's, that's right in line with where the peer group is. So we don't feel that we're too low, and we certainly don't feel we're too high. I think the county's fund balance is 19, 20%. They have taxing authority and we don't. So we believe that we're within that 2% to 3% range, which is, which is what we would consider to be the optimal level.
That's just an extremely low percentage with the amount of budget that we have. It just scares me to be that tight if we have another insurance audit that comes in and says, a building is not safe, stadiums are not safe, or we have chillers that go out, or there's an unplanned capital expense that becomes an emergency. That, it's just very, we have no wiggle room, is my concern from the finance, you know, from my side of finance and fund balance. Understand their concern is, you know, spend it, but I don't know where the money would come from if we have to close a school for something.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Howe.
My question's for, I guess maybe the auditing firm. Do you audit any other school systems in the state of North Carolina comparable to
Gaston County is the biggest that I do myself. I don't know the size of some of the other ones from my other partners. I don't think Gaston County would be the largest of those. We'll probably have at least one other district that's larger than Gaston County.
The reason I'm asked, I'm trying to find out how our fund balance compares to those maybe comparable to our size. What, what kind of fund balance ratio are they running compared to what we're running? And then, I know some of the dangers are, just as Mr. Collier stated, if we lose a chiller, we have a situation in school, whatever, whatever, whatever. But there's a reason the county carries a big fund balance, and probably a reason why we should as well, correct?
I have always thought, as from an LGC standpoint, the fund balance, 2% is a fairly low number. I think 8% to 12% is a, your monthly expenditures. So you have about a third of a month if you had a, you know, something that you had to go out and use that fund balance for. I think Gary has done some, maybe some looking at that as far as your peer group and your, that information is available on the state treasurer's website. I just have not looked at that information in your peer group. So I wouldn't be able to exactly comment, but I think Gary just made the comment that you're, you may be in line with the peer group.
Yes, Ms. Roberts?
Is that right, Gary?
I mean, there shouldn't be too much of a shock because we did discuss this when we talked about the supplement. So we, we knew this was coming, and we knew we would be low. And I know that we also discussed that supplement was something we were going to look at in the future, so we just need to make sure we keep that in mind every year.
Mr. Howe?
One final question, this might be for the superintendent. Because we're running at a third of what we should if we said monthly expenditures are what we're trying to keep, so we're at a 2% versus a 10% to 12%. If something were to happen, as Mr. Collier stated, because I don't want our community sitting there going, oh, no, what, what is the procedure? If we get to, say we got $6 million in fund balance, and we need $8 million to bail us out, does the county commission, since they're the taxing authority in this county, and do they have a responsibility in maintaining that so that our people aren't sitting there going, what if, or what'll happen?
Yeah, I think you're good to clarify that, Mr. Howe. We are an agent of the county. All of our expenditures, obligations are a part of their ultimate role of. That is why we report so much financial information to them on a monthly basis. Also, as Ms. Roberts just pointed out, this was a planned decision. We didn't end up with this, and you all didn't know about it. So we worked to say, but we're also saying we've gone as far as we should go with that because when I joined this organization seven years ago, our fund balance was less than a million dollars. That's where you're really worried, because you all made some decisions this fall. You'll remember, as the state budget drug on and drug on, you said, don't stop this program, don't do this, because you said, we'll step in and do it. That's what the fund balance enabled you to do, and you didn't have to go discuss it with anyone else. So it gives you that flexibility to run a $300 million organization, and that's what's important about that. I think that we all would agree from our trainings that a one-month savings account is a minimum we should have to operate. Unfortunately, in the industry and the way we're set up, no one has set that as a standard. So we have tried to at least get to where we could keep 3% as a target, and we'd love to get to 8%.
Any more questions, Mr. Hoskins? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, is this an action item?
Yes, we have to accept this. Yes.
Yes. Well, Mr. Chair.
We'll need a form of a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the Comprehensive Financial Report.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Ramsey? Any other discussion? We've had some discussion throughout the report. Seeing no other discussion, I will pass on the favor. You know, Mr. Chair, you do.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to add, while Vince is still here, he touched on it lightly. They do a number of school systems, and he pointed out, we're fortunate, we have a dedicated number of folks that stay over there at Bradford Heights and work very hard to manage and protect the taxpayer dollar. And then he comes in and does an independent assessment, he pulls different accounts, and basically holes up in their offices for several weeks to perform this. So we are very transparent on how we operate that. Also, anytime, for example, after the state budget was approved, there were a couple provisions in the state budget that we reached out to our auditors and said, okay, how will we handle this now? For example, you all talked about the TA and how that allocation, and we had been doing teachers. We speak with our auditors beforehand to say, how will we deal with this? And then he can bring the experience that his whole firm is seeing, as they do across the state, and get interpretations for. So we work hard to give you this clean report, and I want you to know there's a large group of people to do this. We have financial secretaries at each of our schools that are diligent on a daily basis working. So this is a culmination of a big process. So thank you for your help, Vince.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be the NC Works Career Coach Program, and I will
Good evening again, Chairman Lutz, board members, and Superintendent Booker. Recently, Gaston County was recognized for being an NC Works Certified Work-Ready Community. You are also familiar with the research and work that CTE Oversight Committee has been focused on. Tonight, Mr. Buchanan, our Director of CTE, and I come before you to ask permission and support to increase yet another partnership with Gaston College for the benefit of our students. This opportunity is listed on your agenda as an NC Works Career Coach Program, and is an action item for your consideration, and Mr. Buchanan is going to share some of the details of the program.
Good afternoon, members of the Gaston County School Board, Superintendent Booker, Chairman Lutz. I'm here today to inform you about the NC Works Career Coach Program and the application process associated with it. The purpose of the NC Works Career Coach Program is to have a full-time career coach split between Gaston College and Gaston County Schools to inform students about local career opportunities, career and college promise courses, and certification and technical degree programs available to them through Gaston College. The State Board of Community Colleges has just created this program with Gaston County Schools embracing it and looking forward to further strengthening the relationships it requires between Gaston County Schools and Gaston College. The NC Works Career Coach will be a key player in helping to address the needs and demands echoed by the CTE Oversight Committee, local manufacturing businesses, and the healthcare industry. As Mr. Ramsey mentioned at our last board meeting, a large majority of our students do not graduate from four-year institutions, and this will be another way to address those students, increase their success once graduated from high school. Gaston College will be responsible for hiring, training, and supervising the career coach. Gaston County Schools will be responsible for the initial high school orientations and ongoing integration of the career coach program with the students, faculty, and administration at the high schools. Maximizing the efficiency of the career coach program throughout the school system will be of the utmost importance when implementing this program. Gaston County is an area that has a bright future ahead of it in job creation and business expansion. Forecast for Gaston predicts job creation expanding to over 5,600 positions in the next 10 years. As you can see, a large part of that is in manufacturing production and healthcare occupations. This is an exciting time for Gaston County as a whole, marked by the creation and efforts of the CTE Oversight Committee, Gaston County's recognition for being the seventh county in the state to receive the NC Works Certified Work-Ready Community Status, and now the State Board of Community Colleges is creating a career coach program that helps expose Gaston County students to abundance of opportunities available to them in partnership with Gaston College. We are here tonight to ask for the Board of Education's approval to complete the joint application with Gaston College to implement the NC Works Career Coach Program.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Upchurch?
Explain, okay, this person is, I believe you said was a employee of Gaston College, or is that right? I just want to make sure. Okay. And they're paid through the state, this money coming down through the state, through Gaston College. We're not, we're not an employee whatsoever. I mean, they're not an employee of us, right? Or they're dual.
That's correct, exactly. They are, they're an employee, our obligation is it's shared on the 50% of the grant.
I just want to make sure. Yeah.
Twenty, half of the 50% of the grant that we're required, so.
Gotcha.
It's estimated to be less than $25,000.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Howe?
So based on the fact, this is a grant proposal that we have to sign off as the Board of Education to give you authority to go ahead and finish applying for that grant, one of the things that I'd like to know how we're going to do, or make sure that we do, is who's going to oversee, I know you said they're kind of an employee of the college, they report to the college, but they'll work with the counselors in that, but who from our school system is going to oversee what they're doing within our arena to make sure that we're getting maximum 50% of the benefit of this person being in there? I just want to make sure that as a, as it relates to CTE, that we're, we're going to sign off to pay this young man, young woman, to be, to help us. I want to make sure they're helping us. We have current people who are appointed to the college through this board, or necessarily hired, but I don't ever hear anything from them. So I just want to make sure that this is something that's going to benefit us.
It's a good point, Mr. Howe. It's a different thing, and I'll say, we're going to get 100% benefit out of this. We will manage it through the other relationships, just like the early college and the current programs that we have located there. This is just taking an opportunity to get a little more push behind what your committee started with the CTE Committee. When you start talking about, let's enhance the partnership between, this is getting a resource to help do that and expose and give us someone that's coming in. a resource to help do that and expose and give us someone that's coming into the schools coordinated through Mr. Buchanan's efforts to expand that. Career and College Promise is a great program we are scratching the surface of. We need to dive in deeper, having someone in there talking about it, showing successes in other places, and exposing our counselors, our career coordinators. With that will be, that's one example of what they'll do. Now, we're all hopeful. Remember, there's a set amount of money. There are 53 colleges in the state deemed eligible to apply for this, so we've still got to go get it. That's why we're striking fast to get our application in soon. So, the big thing is that we can get that memorandum of understanding developed and move forward.
Yes, Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that Gaston County Schools submit a joint application with Gaston College to request the joint funding from the State Board of the Community Colleges for NC Works Career Coach.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ramsey has seconded. Any other discussion?
I just have a comment. As most of you know, I think Chairman Tracy Philbeck was appointed to this state committee, so if anybody knows Tracy Philbeck, let him know we're applying for this grant and we need his support. And like you said, it's really enhancing and really making connection with our guidance counselor, let these students know the opportunity they have to go on to get their technical degree or the tools they need for advanced manufacturing or healthcare, and I think this will help a lot. So, I'm looking forward, and hopefully we do receive that grant.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Any other questions? All in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cook. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. I think everyone's had time to take a look at that, and this will be an action item also. Have they made the motion? Will you approve the consent agenda? Mr. Ramsey has made the motion, and Ms. Guthrie has made a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? And it is unanimous. The item that we added to the agenda, we'll call it 12B, 2310 policy. I would like to open that up for discussion at this time and recognize anyone that would like to speak on that matter. Yes, Mr. Howell?
I guess that would be me, since I asked to put it on there. As I read Policy 2310, it appears to me, and I just, maybe this is where our Madam Attorney can give some clarification to the policy. As I read it, it states that you can request to place an item on the agenda, the public can, to place it on our agenda 10 days prior, and then they are available, then they're able to address that issue in public expression, or if there's already an item on the agenda, they're able to do public expression on it based on a 10-day sign-up, if I read that right. And so, I need clarification on that. If that would be true, normally, we don't get our agenda until five days before the board meeting, the Thursday prior. I'm of the thinking and the mindset that if we're going to have public expression the first 30 minutes of a meeting and more than so many people, I like the rules of public expression to the point of how much time they have to speak and what they need to do to sign up prior to the board meeting, but I think it should be prior to the board meeting, not 10 days before, and I'm not necessarily in favor of it having to be something that's on the agenda, because it could be something that comes up concerning public education on a Friday, and therefore, they should be able to, if it's on a Monday, we're having our board meeting, they should be able to come speak. We're not allowed to comment on it, we're not allowed to rebuttal it, we're allowed to ask for clarification. So, it's not like we're going to have to go figure out what they're talking about to respond to make sure we sound educated. We're not going to have to ask staff to respond. If we decide to do that, we can get clarification at a later meeting, so they're not going to have to run out of the room. I just think, from appearance standpoint, the policy almost discourages people from doing public expression, and if our rule of thumb is, well, if somebody walked in five minutes before the board meeting, we wouldn't squelch their ability to speak, then let's have a policy that reflects that and not one that seems kind of muddy or contradictory. And maybe it's my lack of knowledge and understanding of the policy that makes it seem that way, but even based on the communication prior to this coming on the agenda, it even sounded a little unclear. I'll leave it at that. But I would like to see us develop a policy that allows the public to come in and address us, as long as they sign up before the board meeting starts, and it falls within the first 30 minutes, unless we have a number of people that it would extend past 30 minutes.
Excuse me. Ms. McGraw, would you like to answer that question? Okay. Ms. Cherry?
I guess, what?
You have the floor.
Am I?
Yes.
I guess my question is, and it's just a curiosity question, is how often have we made an exception? And how often have, hold on, I forgot the first one. I apologize, I'm in an altered state. How often have we made an exception, Mr. Chairman and Ms. McGraw? And how often has that affected, has somebody come in and complained, for lack of a better word, that our wait time has, or has somebody complained to a board member? I've never had that complaint, not to say that it's not out there. I'm just curious, has that policy been challenged? It hasn't been an issue? And I'm not saying that the policy is right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm just curious.
Mr. Upchurch?
I have some input on that, too. Maybe not. Okay.
I don't have the policy in front of me, so I'm not really sure, well, no, but I won't re-read, re-read. Are you asking, are you wanting to set a time limit before, because it seems they have 10 days? Am I reading that right? They have 10 days to sign up?
Well, and again, part of the issue is, this is coming up, and I don't believe that any of you have a copy of the policy in front of you. As far as the legalities are concerned, the fact that this board provides a period of time for the public to come and speak to you, that ticks the legal box. I know that as a board, we want to encourage anyone who wants to address this more a matter of a matter of public concern, we want to encourage them to do that, and we do not want your policy to discourage that. Answering Ms. Cherry's question, of course, people don't contact my office for public expression, but I'm not aware of anyone who's been turned away for not having met some deadline. My understanding of the deadline is that the staff certainly wants to know if any public, matter of public concern, as soon as possible, so that if staff has the ability to address that, we can. And if staff doesn't have the ability, we can then make the chairman aware of it, it can become an agenda item, and the board can address that as a board if necessary. So, I'm not aware that our current policy is, has a chilling effect, but that's certainly something this board can discuss, and if you feel your policy needs to be addressed, we can address that. It's this board's policy.
That all the public expressions that I've been part of have been bigger, bigger public concerns that people want to give an opinion, and we sure don't want to discourage that. The ones that are more personal, they seem to contact us individually, or somebody within the central office, or an individual school, rather than becoming more public. Surely, everybody has a right, and we want them to. So, that's why I asked the question, if anybody had a better handle on the frequency and how many exceptions, because I don't, and of course, I don't get that. Dana would get that, you would get that, Tanya. Have we made exceptions? You know, that's not something that I'm necessarily aware of. So, I guess my point is, is it an issue that we do need to make a change? Or is what we have working well enough for? I don't know.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Since I'm the rookie, I'm going to give the parent perspective on this. Just a couple of years ago, I was a parent who had an issue, and we were discussing things in the community, and the sign-up 10 days prior was frustrating. Not being a part of this, we didn't know that if we showed up, that we would be allowed to speak. So, from a parent perspective, I would like to us be more in line with the commissioners' meeting to where we can sign up that day. And this is an issue that has been brought to my attention and was discussed when I was running for the seat. So, I've heard it in my community, and I heard it as an issue when I was running for office as well.
Ms. Howell?
One of the questions posed was, has there been any community complaints concerning our public expression policy? If you go to my social media page, I had a ton of comments and questions concerning public expression as it dealt with the matter in the Stanley, Mount Holly, Belmont area, concerning a very heated topic amongst the community members. They were asking, could they come express themselves at our board meeting? The policy was given 2310, that you've got to have 10 days, here's the form, fill it out, state what you'd like to come talk about. That riled a lot of people to say, you know, why do I have to sign up for something 10 days to express my opinion on how I feel about something? It seems to be a controlling nature of what I would like to discuss, to whether that gets approved or not. Now, if this board's assumption is that we won't control what you say, if this board's assumption is that if you show up, we'll let you speak, why promote a policy that is contrary to our actions? That is what I'm saying. If we're going to allow them to speak prior and sign up prior to the board meeting, let's have a policy that just says that, so as Ms. Roberts has clearly stated, it eliminates any confusion within our community of what it takes to speak at public expression. There is no confusion. If I want to go over and speak at a county commissioner meeting concerning education or educational funding, or township grants, or the price of gas in South Gastonia, they accommodate whatever I want to say, as long as I follow the guidelines in which it is, which is to state my name, address, and sign up prior to the board meeting. That's all I'm asking, is that we provide some clarity, not to what we do, but that what we say matches what we do.
Mr. Collier?
I guess I'm the old guy that's been around a long time here. I've been here in the days when we were threatened from right there by many people out of the county, and I understand a lot of the reasons why you want us speakers to jump through some hurdles to speak. Like speakers tonight, they were well-prepared, they were well-spoken, and they weren't passionate. I've been at meetings where it becomes an open mic, and you don't want that. So, sometimes, if you're trying to curtail passion, I get that with a policy. Sometimes, if we need to know for safety reasons, if something controversial is going to be spoken about right there, I'd like to know that, and I'm sure staff would like to know if somebody's going to come here that's going to really stir some emotions about something. None of us like to be surprised. So, I understand some of the notice, I understand that side of it, but yet, I understand Mr. Howell and Ms. Roberts' points as well. But that to say, I have been at county commissioner meetings where they shut down public expression, I have been to town hall meetings where they shut it down and they do not hear everybody. It is the chairman's prerogative to shut down public expression or allow it at any time in any of those meetings that I've been to. And over the years, I have seen both sides of it. So, I hear what you're saying, and I agree that we should allow everyone an opportunity to speak, but there are occasions, and there are subjects, and there are some things that I think staff, for safety reasons, need to maybe have us prepared for. And that's the only cautionary side I've seen, because I've been on the other side of some of those meetings when it's been scary to be here. And so, you know, we can't have extra police force at every meeting, but again, the worst thing you want to do is have open mic. That's when emotions run high, that's when people really get ramped up, and you do not want to encourage that. I'll say that much.
If the last thing you want to do is squelch, control, manage somebody's First Amendment rights to an elected body that they elected, whether they voted for you or I, either one, the ability to speak on a topic that they feel necessary to speak on. Now, if the chairman has the ability to say, "We're done with public expression tonight, we've got to move on to meeting," that's the chairman's prerogative, and I'm okay with that. That's what he decides to do, because that's going to be his call, or whoever else is the chairman of this board or any other board. But the policy, if we're going to say, "If you come in, feel free to speak, we're not going to tell you no," then the policy needs to match what we do. I don't want to go get gas, and the gas sign says $1.68, they go, "Well, you can pay $1.20, or you can pay $2.50." What we put in writing ought to match what it is, and so, if this board wants to say, "Our policy is this, if you don't sign up 10 days prior, you're not speaking," then let this board raise their hand on it, but I will not. If the board, if the policy, the board's going to say, "If you come in prior to the meeting and sign up and follow the rules, you can speak," I'll be more than happy to support the policy that matches our actions. Just the two ought to match.
Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation that we get our board attorney involved, and let's maybe look at ideas of what other people are doing. I agree with Mr. Howell, 10 days may be a little excessive. Well, I'll say it, 10 days is excessive. I'll just say that. But somewhere, there should be some compromise that makes it appear that we are more open to public expression, rather than to Mr. Howell's point, that we discourage it with this 10-day thing, and I can see where parents would interpret that, both by Ms. Roberts' comments and Mr. Howell's comments. I can see that side. So, my recommendation is, let's look and get some ideas of what some other people are doing, and see if we can come up with some compromise of what we have with the policy now. And I apologize, I don't have the current policy in front of me as well.
And I'm open for planning to our retreat, but let's just cover it. I mean, let's dig into it and see what we like it or if we don't like it, and then let's move on, so.
All right, I will...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie?
I would suggest that we take the opportunity to look at other school board policies, look at some of the, our schools that are about equal to Gaston County, and see how they treat this issue with our citizens, and then bring back a recommendation, because tonight, we cannot solve anything without having our policy before us, and we do need to have some type of template to look at before we can say for certain that this is something that we need to change. I would suggest that we just go ahead, look at other districts, examine some of the policies, see how they treat this, and if a revision is necessary, which I hear that perhaps it is, then let's consider that at our retreat.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Okay, what I'm hearing is from Mr. Collier, and Mr. Collier and Ms. Guthrie and Mr. Howell is, we'll confer with the attorney and have her come up with some suggestions, and do some research on some other policies at other school boards, and then we'll add this as a topic to our retreat agenda, and if there's any other further discussion that we need to have on this at our agenda, we'll do it at that time. Is everyone okay with that? Okay? All right. Thank you very much. That's what we'll do. The next item, I would believe, would be Mr. Booker's superintendent comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to make sure everyone saw that last Tuesday, the Department of Public Instruction North Carolina School Report Cards were released for the academic year of 2014 through 2015. The cards highlight state, district, school information about student performance, attendance, class size, school safety, teacher quality, classroom technology. So, if you go to our website, you can find a link to it, as well as going to the Department of Public Instruction's website has the Wells, but it's on our website as a quick link. I want to thank those of you who've been able to get out and participate in our parades. We really need to thank our schools. Those parades happen because we have great marching bands, cheerleaders, our junior ROTC units, sports teams, and others dance, they all add so much to the parades, and of course, have a number-one... They add so much to the parades, and of course, having number-one ride in them in the buses is a great thing. So we appreciate that. Five parades have occurred locally so far, and there are three more this week. Earlier, Mr. Howell touched on, South Point High School football team is on the quest for a 3A state championship. A lot of energy, positive energy Friday night, what great support South Point has, and to watch them win Friday night was really exciting. So they will be traveling for another Friday night game. A lot of times, they're on Saturdays, but we have drawn the Friday night game against Rocky Mount, and I know that there'll be a caravan of folks heading to Chapel Hill on Friday, and we hope that they will be successful in bringing back their fifth state championship, or the class organization that they have. Finally, from my report, I want to remind you that tomorrow night, we will be attending the county commissioners' meeting, and we are going to present a little brief video and show them about Chromebooks in Action, and just thank them. This was talked about earlier with the other money. We received 1.1 million. They approved that on a Tuesday. On a Friday, our purchase orders were executed through Ms. Mattson and Mr. Hoskins' work, and those computers started being deployed, over 4,000 of them, last week in our schools. And so they are in use today, and we want to just go over and thank them for that, so we'll have that going. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie?
I have something that I want to say about transportation. Every morning, I travel to Clover, South Carolina, and I go down New Hope Road and down past Stowe Botanical Gardens. And several buses, I meet on my way to school, and it's dark. I want to say right now that the safety practices that I've seen by our bus drivers just is excellent. On those busy, on that busy highway early in the morning, those bus drivers put out those signs long before they get to the stop of the place that they want to pick up students. And this isn't done, I haven't seen this done once or twice, but I've seen it done enough to say that we have some bus drivers out there taking care of our children who are practicing safety every morning, early morning. We don't get a chance to say thank you enough to those folk who are responsible for picking up and delivering our children. But I wanted to say that, because I'm out there, and I see it. And I want the bus drivers to know that I greatly appreciate the safety practices that I've seen you display early in the mornings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. We have... Oh, yes, Mr. Howell?
One last thing. I don't want to just brag on South Point making the state championship, but then we have two teams that are state champions over the past weekend. One from North Gas and then one from Charlevo.
All right. Okay, you're stealing thunder for future meetings where we bring them in and recognize them.
Yeah, if you don't recognize cheerleaders.
Yes, we do. Again, we are blessed. You saw tonight, all the children getting awards. We have a lot of success that goes on in our district, and we are fortunate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Booker. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, if I can get my screen to come back up. I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, paragraph A6, for personnel.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Ramsey, any discussion? All in favor? Any, these unanimous, and we'll take about a five-minute break.